Aaron, could you do a test?
You're good, Chelsea. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the July 9th, 2025, meeting of the City Planning Commission for the City of Manitou Springs. The order of proceedings for tonight's public hearing items is as follows. First, an agenda item will be called to the docket. Staff will make a presentation on that agenda item. The commissioners will then discuss and perhaps have questions for staff on the agenda item. Then the applicant can come forward and make a statement, followed by additional commission discussion and questions for the applicant if necessary. Then we will open up the hearing to the public to provide statements in favor, statements in opposition, general comments about the application. The applicant will then be able to come up and rebut any comments discussed. We will then close the hearing. Commissioners will then discuss. There may be a motion on the agenda item. A second on the motion. There'll be more discussion perhaps, and then we'll vote on the item, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item as necessary. For any decision item tonight, there is an appeal process, and it is as follows. Written notice of appeal must be filed with the city clerk's office within 10 calendar days of the decision. Such appeals shall be heard by the city council, and please see the staff for further information. Before we're doing the roll call, I will note for the record that alternate commissioner delay is seated due to the absence of a regular commission member. All right, so now we're going to do the roll call. It's going to be a little different. I would like to ask each commission member to state their name for the record and whether or not they are present. It helps with the transcription process.
Mike Casey, present.
Steve Graybill, present.
Roy Rosenthal, present.
Kerry Storm, present.
Justin Wilson, present.
Gloria Latimer, present.
Frank Delay, present.
Sorry, Chelsea Royston, present as staff. We also have our attorney, Kanal Parikh, present online.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the approval of minutes.
Sorry, there were actually no minutes available for review this month. I did provide the link to last month's recording just to refresh everyone's memory on the work session, since we're going to be kind of picking up where we left off there. We will have those minutes for review hopefully next month.
Okay, thank you. And now moving on to public comment and non-agenda items. This is a time where any member of the public may present for up to three minutes of comments regarding items not on this agenda for tonight. It is the commission's practice to not respond to comments during this time.
I don't see any online in the audience.
All right, so before getting into the first agenda item, do any commissioners have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communication to disclose for any of the items on the agenda tonight? All right, hearing done, we'll move on. I'd like to call variance 2506 Creek Walk Phase Four to the docket.
Thank you. I am going to take just a minute to get that pulled up on the screen. Okay. Again, Chelsea Royston for the record, presenting variance 2506 for Creek Walk Trail Phase Four. This variance is from section 18-03-9-6E3 of the Manitou Springs Land Use and Development Code, which requires that the street design of Manitou Avenue have eight-inch vertical curbs with detached sidewalks. The proposed design of Creek Walk Trail Phase Four has a trail that is attached to the back of the curb. And the applicant, we have the project manager here this evening, the applicant indicated that the requirement for eight-inch vertical curbs is not compliant with Colorado Department of Transportation, which has oversight over that portion of Manitou Avenue. So moving to the screen here, just a sketch of the section of the trail that we're referring to. Again, this is for Creek Walk. It's a continuation of previous Creek Walk Trail phases. And this alignment goes towards Manitou Avenue, is on the north side of Manitou Avenue, and goes from Mayfair Avenue on the east to the Chase Bank property, the former Chase Bank property now owned by City of Manitou Springs. There are several existing conditions along this path. Here you can see one portion of the sidewalk. And, excuse me, for the purpose of this presentation, the terms sidewalk, trail, any of those, these are all used interchangeably. The proposed design of the Creek Walk Trail for this alignment will be a 10-foot concrete path. And so that will be the consistent proposed design throughout this section of trail. So it will be replacing the existing sidewalk there, which is about three feet. It has sections that have attached sidewalk and sections that are detached with landscaped, I use that term loosely, area in between sections of it. This is again a very rough sketch. The documents that were provided as part of the application are much more technical. They do not lend themselves very well to being projected on a large screen. And to make it a little bit easier, I use colors. So the red is for the proposed trail for this section only. Again, it has connections on the east and on the west. The green are for proposed landscape bump outs, and the yellow is for crosswalks across Manitou Avenue. So there are two types of landscape bump outs that are being proposed. Again, the code requirement is that the whole length of the trail/side walk along this section of code shall be detached, which means that there should be landscaping in between the sidewalk and the back of curb. These are primarily thought to aid in separating pedestrian traffic from vehicle traffic. This section of Manitou Avenue also has on-street parking, which can have the same effect. And so this Creek Walk Trail master plan was created and adopted in 2018, which predates the Land Use and Development Code, and thus the requirement for eight-inch vertical curbs with detached sidewalks. There was a substantial amount of community engagement with this Creek Walk master plan, and as there was with the Land Use and Development Code. However, this is the only portion of the code that requires detached sidewalks. All of the other road sections, including any of the sketches in the Land Use and Development Code, show attached sidewalks. So we're actually not quite sure if that is truly the recommended requirement, or if that was perhaps an inconsistency that wasn't caught when the code was adopted. Either way, the eight-inch vertical curbs do not meet CDOT standards. And so as a result, this, the master plan for Creek Walk and future code revisions for the Land Use and Development Code will be, will be proposed in such a way that they comply with CDOT or just defer to CDOT regulations. So circling back, excuse me, sorry for the rambling there, but there are two types of land use bump out, or landscaping bump outs that are proposed for the section of Creek Walk. There are two that have crosswalks, and so the pedestrian crosswalk will actually bisect the longer landscape bump out on two of the islands. As you can see, this design here, we have the 10-foot concrete trail, and then the pedestrian crosswalk goes in the middle of that landscape bump out, again, as a way to protect the pedestrians and aid in separating them from vehicle traffic. And then the other landscape bump outs will be kind of whole. They'll have the, they will be interspersed with the on-street parking. And the design was intended to provide balance between landscaped areas that are more consolidated but may have more lively planting than what we see currently, and also balancing that with the need for on-street parking through that section of Manitou Avenue. There are other constraints leading to this variance request. The existing section cut on the left here shows the travel lane, the on-street parking, the attached three-foot sidewalk, and then a very drastic grade change down to the Fountain Creek floodway. And so that grade change will not be changed at all. That would, that would require significant engineering as that is a floodway there. And it would be very difficult to mitigate the downstream effects of interfering with that floodway. So there are two proposed section cuts that will be, I believe they'll be used during different sections, different portions of this trail section. Again, they show vehicle traffic, and then the trail, and again, the grade change down to Fountain Creek.
You're good, Chelsea. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the July 9th, 2025, meeting of the City Planning Commission for the City of Manitou Springs. The order of proceedings for tonight's public hearing items is as follows. First, an agenda item will be called to the docket. Staff will make a presentation on that agenda item. The commissioners will then discuss and perhaps have questions for staff on the agenda item. Then the applicant can come forward and make a statement, followed by additional commission discussion and questions for the applicant if necessary. Then we will open up the hearing to the public to provide statements in favor, statements in opposition, general comments about the application. The applicant will then be able to come up and rebut any comments discussed. We will then close the hearing. Commissioners will then discuss. There may be a motion on the agenda item. A second on the motion. There'll be more discussion perhaps, and then we'll vote on the item, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item as necessary. For any decision item tonight, there is an appeal process, and it is as follows. Written notice of appeal must be filed with the city clerk's office within 10 calendar days of the decision. Such appeals shall be heard by the city council, and please see the staff for further information. Before we're doing the roll call, I will note for the record that alternate commissioner delay is seated due to the absence of a regular commission member. All right, so now we're going to do the roll call. It's going to be a little different. I would like to ask each commission member to state their name for the record and whether or not they are present. It helps with the transcription process.
Mike Casey, present.
Steve Graybill, present.
Roy Rosenthal, present.
Kerry Storm, present.
Justin Wilson, present.
Gloria Latimer, present.
Frank Delay, present.
Sorry, Chelsea Royston, present as staff. We also have our attorney, Kanal Parikh, present online.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the approval of minutes.
Sorry, there were actually no minutes available for review this month. I did provide the link to last month's recording just to refresh everyone's memory on the work session, since we're going to be kind of picking up where we left off there. We will have those minutes for review hopefully next month.
Okay, thank you. And now moving on to public comment and non-agenda items. This is a time where any member of the public may present for up to three minutes of comments regarding items not on this agenda for tonight. It is the commission's practice to not respond to comments during this time.
I don't see any online in the audience.
All right, so before getting into the first agenda item, do any commissioners have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communication to disclose for any of the items on the agenda tonight? All right, hearing done, we'll move on. I'd like to call variance 2506 Creek Walk Phase Four to the docket.
Thank you. I am going to take just a minute to get that pulled up on the screen. Okay. Again, Chelsea Royston for the record, presenting variance 2506 for Creek Walk Trail Phase Four. This variance is from section 18-03-9-6E3 of the Manitou Springs Land Use and Development Code, which requires that the street design of Manitou Avenue have eight-inch vertical curbs with detached sidewalks. The proposed design of Creek Walk Trail Phase Four has a trail that is attached to the back of the curb. And the applicant, we have the project manager here this evening, the applicant indicated that the requirement for eight-inch vertical curbs is not compliant with Colorado Department of Transportation, which has oversight over that portion of Manitou Avenue. So moving to the screen here, just a sketch of the section of the trail that we're referring to. Again, this is for Creek Walk. It's a continuation of previous Creek Walk Trail phases. And this alignment goes towards Manitou Avenue, is on the north side of Manitou Avenue, and goes from Mayfair Avenue on the east to the Chase Bank property, the former Chase Bank property now owned by City of Manitou Springs. There are several existing conditions along this path. Here you can see one portion of the sidewalk. And, excuse me, for the purpose of this presentation, the terms sidewalk, trail, any of those, these are all used interchangeably. The proposed design of the Creek Walk Trail for this alignment will be a 10-foot concrete path. And so that will be the consistent proposed design throughout this section of trail. So it will be replacing the existing sidewalk there, which is about three feet. It has sections that have attached sidewalk and sections that are detached with landscaped, I use that term loosely, area in between sections of it. This is again a very rough sketch. The documents that were provided as part of the application are much more technical. They do not lend themselves very well to being projected on a large screen. And to make it a little bit easier, I use colors. So the red is for the proposed trail for this section only. Again, it has connections on the east and on the west. The green are for proposed landscape bump outs, and the yellow is for crosswalks across Manitou Avenue. So there are two types of landscape bump outs that are being proposed. Again, the code requirement is that the whole length of the trail/side walk along this section of code shall be detached, which means that there should be landscaping in between the sidewalk and the back of curb. These are primarily thought to aid in separating pedestrian traffic from vehicle traffic. This section of Manitou Avenue also has on-street parking, which can have the same effect. And so this Creek Walk Trail master plan was created and adopted in 2018, which predates the Land Use and Development Code, and thus the requirement for eight-inch vertical curbs with detached sidewalks. There was a substantial amount of community engagement with this Creek Walk master plan, and as there was with the Land Use and Development Code. However, this is the only portion of the code that requires detached sidewalks. All of the other road sections, including any of the sketches in the Land Use and Development Code, show attached sidewalks. So we're actually not quite sure if that is truly the recommended requirement, or if that was perhaps an inconsistency that wasn't caught when the code was adopted. Either way, the eight-inch vertical curbs do not meet CDOT standards. And so as a result, this, the master plan for Creek Walk and future code revisions for the Land Use and Development Code will be, will be proposed in such a way that they comply with CDOT or just defer to CDOT regulations. So circling back, excuse me, sorry for the rambling there, but there are two types of land use bump out, or landscaping bump outs that are proposed for the section of Creek Walk. There are two that have crosswalks, and so the pedestrian crosswalk will actually bisect the longer landscape bump out on two of the islands. As you can see, this design here, we have the 10-foot concrete trail, and then the pedestrian crosswalk goes in the middle of that landscape bump out, again, as a way to protect the pedestrians and aid in separating them from vehicle traffic. And then the other landscape bump outs will be kind of whole. They'll have the, they will be interspersed with the on-street parking. And the design was intended to provide balance between landscaped areas that are more consolidated but may have more lively planting than what we see currently, and also balancing that with the need for on-street parking through that section of Manitou Avenue. There are other constraints leading to this variance request. The existing section cut on the left here shows the travel lane, the on-street parking, the attached three-foot sidewalk, and then a very drastic grade change down to the Fountain Creek floodway. And so that grade change will not be changed at all. That would, that would require significant engineering as that is a floodway there. And it would be very difficult to mitigate the downstream effects of interfering with that floodway. So there are two proposed section cuts that will be, I believe they'll be used during different sections, different portions of this trail section. Again, they show vehicle traffic, and then the trail, and again, the grade change down to Fountain Creek. Getting into the variance criteria. The first section that no variance shall be authorized unless planning commission finds that both of these criteria have been met. The first one is that the development will not result in development of areas at risk of natural hazards unless adequate mitigation is provided to the satisfaction of the planning director. The proposed alignment for this section of Creek Walk Trail is not in the floodplain as it sits atop a slope that acts as the channel for floodwaters. There is a softscape trail that accompanies this and is closer to the creek for a portion of this trail section. And that is an example of passive recreational development that can withstand flood events. That is not intended to be changed during this section of Creek Walk Trail. So that will remain where it is. And number two, no adverse impact will result on adjacent properties. There are not any anticipated adverse effects. The trail alignment is designed to be in the right-of-way and adjacent to private property or on private property with public access easements. It's situated between Manitou Avenue and Fountain Creek. That, that area is not large enough to accommodate private development, such as commercial development for buildings or anything like that. And all of the existing private development is on the north side of Fountain Creek. So this would actually activate an underused, underutilized portion. So this would actually activate an underused, underutilized portion of the right-of-way or private property adjacent to the right-of-way. Moving on to the next set of criteria. Number one, the applicant would suffer unnecessary hardships as a result of the application of the LUDC, which hardship is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same zone district because of the unusual configuration of the applicant's property boundaries, unique circumstances related to the location of existing structures or the existence of exceptional topographic conditions. Again, Creek Walk, this Creek Walk alignment was designed to fit within the confines of the right-of-way between Manitou Avenue, which is a C dot roadway to the south and a retaining wall to the north that acts as a channel for the floodplain. Imposing this new regulation that is not in conformance with C dot standards would jeopardize the funding, the schedule, and the overall development of the trail. The applicant indicated that the requirement of the eight inch vertical curbs is not compliant with C dot standards. The next one states that there are no design alternatives or alternative locations that would eliminate the need for the variance. And in talking through this project, it looks like there are several alternatives that could reduce the, the need for the variance. One would be reducing the width of the trail in order to accommodate the detached sidewalk. However, those alternatives would have several negative repercussions. All phases of the Creek Walk Trail are intended to provide a consistent user experience, especially as it relates to interactions between different types of users. So the ten-foot trail width is a standard that promotes safety and comfortable user experience for multiple modalities. And reducing that in order to get more landscaping, again, would increase costs, could reduce off-street or could reduce on-street parking and would delay the construction timeline. Expanding northward would also have unreasonable impacts as the federally regulated floodplain would need to be modified and engineered to mitigate the downstream impacts of narrowing the floodway channel. The next criteria is that the enforcement of the provisions deprives the applicant the right that is enjoyed by a majority of the other properties in the same zone district. There's not really any consistent sidewalk design along Manitou Avenue. Some sections have attached sidewalk, some have detached sidewalk. The proposed design offers a consistent trail surface and strategically placed landscape projections that again minimize the the upkeep of the landscaped areas and kind of consolidates that rather than spreading it along a longer distance. And I apologize, my numbering is off in this staff report for these criteria. I think that's where I'm getting hung up. But criteria number four is that the need for the variance does not result in the actions from previous property owners or is an otherwise self-imposed hardship. The requirement for the detached sidewalk was implemented with the adoption of the LUDC in 2023. The Creek Walk Master Plan was adopted in 2018 and development of the construction drawings has been pursued as funding allows in accordance with the 2018 plans. So this could be deemed a self-imposed hardship as the city has adopted both documents and they do contradict one another. Number four, there is a disability affecting the owners or the tenants of the property. The proposed trail has been designed in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The current trail is not ADA accessible and this development would increase ADA accessibility for the community and the region. And finally, number six, the variance request is required in order to preserve a contributing structure in a historic sub-district. A portion of the trail will be developed in the Villas Historic Subdistrict along the Blue Skies and Briarhurst properties at four oh two and four oh four Manitou Avenue. According to the Manitou Springs Historic District Design Guidelines, Fountain Creek is a key feature of these properties. And the natural setting that includes steep and undulating topography, meandering paved streets and Fountain Creek, which weaves through the West Manitou and Villas Historic Subdistricts, indicate and includes historic stone bridges and retaining walls. The proposed alignment of the trail to the south of Fountain Creek and the variance to the detached sidewalk allow for this alignment to be closer to Manitou Avenue, which helps to preserve the historic landscape surrounding Fountain Creek. Should the planning commission find it appropriate to grant the variance, staff does not recommend any conditions. And I do have motion language, however, I will stop sharing my screen for the discussion. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chelsea. Are there any questions for staff?
Does this include any improvement to the path down by the creek?
I don't believe so. I think that is intended to remain a softscape trail at this point, but that I would ask that we direct that question to the applicant when she takes the seat. Sorry, I think we're.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. You may step forward, ma'am. So please get that mic close to you and state your name and address for the record.
Karen Rowe. I'm a consultant with the City of Manitou Springs at eight oh nine Orion Drive, Colorado Springs, Colorado. So I'm an extension of City Manitou Springs staff on this project. To answer your question about are there any other improvements on the trail, there is improvements near the duck stop or formerly Chase Bank that timber stairs will go down to a connection to the existing trail. So there is one section that improves the connection to the existing creek, truly Creek Walk Trail next to the creek.
Karen, will utilities need to be moved?
Yes. Ben Schmidt, who I'm working with, is working with Lumen and Colorado Springs Utilities to move the utilities.
Will they be underground?
Yes. That's my, that's my understanding. I know the poles will be removed, so I'm assuming the utilities go underground. That's all going to be done before this project starts. I think they already are, have started relocating a lot of those utilities. They just need to take the poles down.
Do you know also how wide the landscape bump outs will be? Are they kind of the same as where the crosswalks are?
Let me get my details, but Chelsea has the, the details up there. Let me get it. There's seven feet, seven feet wide from, I think, curb to curb. And then they'll have like gutter, you know, in addition to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, hearing none. That's it, ma'am, unless you'd like to offer anything else.
No, I'm just excited to see this project move forward and I want to thank Chelsea for working with me on this application. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll now open up the hearing to the public. If you'd like to make any comment for the record, please step up and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I don't see any online.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what are our thoughts?
I could make a motion to approve variance twenty five zero six for Creek Walk Phase Number Four based on the findings that the request meets the review criteria for granting a variance assessed forth in City Code Section eighteen point zero six point four point two, which staff's conditions is outlined in, yes, no recommendations.
Second.
Okay, there's a second. So any more discussion?
One second.
Oh, we already had one. So no more discussion? Just, okay, we're good. Okay. All right, let's vote. All those in favor? So I could unanimous. All right, the item carries, so. All right, so that concludes the quasi judicial portion of our meeting tonight. I think we're going to move on to other business, which is a code revision work session. Yeah, I need to share. I need to get on Zoom.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Fred, for the record, Fred Rollenhagen, Planning Director. So we are doing our, I think it's our third working session on ADUs and some of these code revisions that we've been working on. And I need to get on Zoom so I can share my PowerPoint presentation. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience. So this is part three, our code revisions for working session, part three. Let me get back here. No, 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 no. Trying to get best. I'm just trying to get to. Okay. After, I want to appreciate, thank you very much for the conversation that we had last month about the, with the, with the Housing Advisory Board. I thought that was very helpful. We got a lot of information. There's a lot of dialogue and it helped, it helped us as staff in moving forward and understanding your perspective and where we wanted to take this. We did not specifically invite the Housing Advisory Board to this working session, but I did communicate with.
Right, can I just stop you for a second? Sorry. If there's members of the public that are having discussion, I just ask that you take it outside, please. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we did not formally invite, invite the Housing Advisory Board members to this working session, but it's a working session and it's a public meeting and it's, it's always, it's available to anybody who wants to attend. I did, I did communicate with Allison, the chair, and said that any HAB members, and we have, we have one here in the audience, any HAB members are very much welcome to sit in and listen in and and hear what, what's going on here. I am going to make this presentation to the HAB board next week at their, at their meeting next week, so they kind of stay in the loop. But after last month's discussion, I took all of the, I took all of the items and all of the concerns and kind of grouped them into basically three large buckets. And I put that in my memo that's, that's in the packet. So the first bucket was concern or make assuring appropriate residential development standards or that certain development standards, the ADUs comply with certain development standards. The second one, the second bucket was ADU affordability. I heard some concerns about assuring or finding some way to assure the ADUs perform their intended function, which is to provide some kind of affordable housing. That's going to be a little bit more difficult because we're, we're limited in how we can, we are limited as, as a, as a government, we're limited in our ability to influence property values and things like that. The third thing that I heard is concern about the scope of this and how many properties could be affected by this and how big of an issue this could be to the city. And so we put together some maps that I'll also, that I'll bring up here in my presentation to talk about, a little bit about the scope of, basically we identified, we did a, staff did a fairly good job, I think, of identifying really the scope and how many lots would or could be affected by this type of regulation. So the first one I'll talk about is residential development standards. And I know that there are a number of concerns that were related to how or whether the city has the ability to apply its current development standards to ADUs. And as, as we had indicated before, the law allows us to apply such standards, such as the city's historic preservation ordinance. We can apply setbacks. So the setbacks that apply to regular, single-family homes could also apply to ADUs. Conformance with minimum construction standards to maintain construction quality. So just like any single-family residence requires a building permit and needs to comply with the building code, ADUs must comply with the building code and, and, and things like that. And the habitability code that the city has adopted. Also assurance of adequate water supply and sewer capacity were communicated. And so what, what we're doing right now or what I'm going to be doing before we bring this to a public hearing with, with the Planning Commission is talk with our Public Works Department and get a recommendation on how connection with water and sewer is best to be done. Right now, there could be two options. One is to require a separate tap for ADUs or number two, require or allow the, the same tap to be used for AD, for, for ADUs. Planning staff just doesn't have enough information to make a recommendation either way. So we're going to be communicating, we're going to be talking with Public Works to find out what, what the preferred option is and then we'll bring that to you. Let's see. So with, with the design standards or, or the design, I'm going to skip these. What we did in the packet is in order to outline the standards for ADUs or staff's recommended standards for what a regulation would look like, we put together this cheat sheet or what we call a cheat sheet that's in your, that's in the packet that, that talks about what those standards could look like. Beginning with what is an ADU. And so what we have or what we're recommending is that an accessory dwelling unit, the definition would, would need to meet very closely the, uh, the, the definition would, would need to meet very closely the um, the, the definition that state law has, has identified, and that means um, we, we do need to include um ADUs that are either internal to the home, to the single family home, attached to the single family home, or detached, a detached dwelling unit uh to the single family home. But we are recommending that, number one, they complete, they, they provide complete independent living facilities for one or more individuals. Number two, that it's located on the same lot as the, as a proposed or existing primary residence. And number three, that it includes facilities for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. That way you're not, that way somebody doesn't come in and say, oh, I want to convert my shed into an ADU and not have any kind of facilities or plumbing or anything like that. Also, what we have here, um, where would ADUs be allowed? So what we're required by state law is to allow them wherever single family dwelling units are allowed, and currently we allow those in three zoning districts. The general residential zone district, the low density residential zone district, and the hillside low density residential zone district. So what we'd be proposing is that they would be identified as allowed in those three. We do not have to allow them in any other zoning district because um, single family dwellings are not specifically allowed in any other zoning district, so we don't have to worry about them being, for example, in the commercial zoning district or, or the, the town, or the downtown zoning district. How big can ADUs be? This is probably where uh, state law gives us the greatest flexibility. It does say that we have to allow ADUs between five, uh, between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet. And so that's where, that, that's what we have in um, in our cheat sheet right now. We can allow them bigger, we can allow them up to the same size as a single family residence. If we wanted to, we could allow them even bigger than a single family residence, but that might, that doesn't really um meet the, the intention of what an ADU is. We could also allow ADUs that are smaller than five hundred square feet. But if you do that, you get into issues of um, you get into habitability issues and issues whether there's adequate space for a building to actually comply with the building code, because you need space for a water closet and kitchen facilities and a bedroom and things like that. So what we have right now in our cheat sheet is um, the, the, the minimum that we have to allow for square footage, and that's between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet in size. There are some communities that allow, that allow ADUs up to like uh fifty percent of the size of of the main dwelling unit, or bigger than that, so we can do that and, and we can have that discussion um tonight. So what, what can an ADU look like? Uh, or, or basically what are those design standards that um, uh, that an ADU must conform with? So the, what we are recommending is that um, if the property is in the historic district, that the ADU must comply with the historic preservation ordinance, and the state law allows us to do that. Um, as well as the historic district guidelines. There are also other design guidelines um in the, uh, in the uh land use and development code that this would, uh, that an ADU would need to comply with. Uh, let's see, so where can I build an ADU on my property? So th- this is also where the design, where the design standards and the development standards come into play. What we're recommending, which, which is pretty basic, is that ADUs must comply with setbacks of the zoning district, that they comply with the height restrictions of the, of um, of for, uh, for residences and in, in, and for the zoning district. And other develop, development standards that applicable to the property and to that particular zone district. So that means that if you're in the um, there are additional restrictions in the HD, um, let's see, let me back up here. There, there are additional restrictions in the hillside low density residential zone district. And we're saying that those, those, they apply to, to the single family dwelling, they would also need to apply to the um accessory dwelling unit. The other thing, the other thing of concern that we can regulate is can we, can you rent out your ADU as a short term rental? Um, and so right now, we, we would, we would recommend that um, that short term rental of ADUs is not permitted, and that would be included in the section in the code for short term rentals. Also, there's a concern, we, we heard a concern that um, could somebody, could a property owner live in the ADU and then short term rent out their, um, their, their primary dwelling unit, which could effectively defeat the purpose of an ADU? So we can, we can, um, we can uh, uh, include that language in the code and prohibit the, the short term rental use of um both the primary residence and the ADU, and so that would be, so that's also what staff is recommending. Again, let's see, do ADUs need separate utilities? We're working on that right now, and we're going to be talking with Public Works uh to find out what their uh, uh, recommendation is for um how to handle utilities to the ADU. The other thing that state law has told us that we need to follow is um making sure or assuring that the approval process is an administrative process. So it cannot be, um, they, the, the state law does not allow ADUs to be approved through a public hearing process to be approved either by Planning Commission or City Council, and that it also be an objective process, a, a similar process to the way we approve other uh, other residences. And so we, staff would propose that ADUs be administratively approved through our existing minor site plan process with a grading and erosion control plan for detached ADUs or attached ADUs that require new construction. Now, if the property is in the, within the historic district, you also need approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, and that would include our, the material change of appearance certification process. We're going to, I'm going to confirm that with our attorney before the public hearing. But before uh consideration of this draft ordinance, but our understanding is because the law allows us to apply our historic dis, historic preservation ordinance to ADUs, that that, that includes everything in that ordinance, which include, which does include a hearing before the Historic Preservation Commission. So we will confirm that and, and make sure that that's in the draft ordinance that comes before you.
And uh, really briefly, my, my understanding is that um, that is in compliance with the legislation because uh, you can have an interior or um an ADU that is in an existing building, either your garage or your primary residence, or however that works. And you can get that approved through the administrative process without going to the Historic Preservation Commission if there are no exterior changes to your property. So we're not um regulating the approval of the use for the ADU, we would just be um regulating the, the new development in accordance with the Historic Preservation Guidelines.
Okay, let's get on to the fun part now. When we'll go, we'll go through the series of slides that were in the um, uh, that were in your packet. Um, I'll provide some more information, so this is where I wanted to go through this and kind of talk about what, what's the scope, what are we really talking about? In terms of how many lots could, could actually um qualify for an ADU under this possible regulation? So, so I wanted to start out with, um, how many, how many single unit dwellings do we actually have in the city? So in the three zoning districts where this would apply, we uh, we tallied up, we've got about sixteen hundred, little over sixteen hundred single family dwelling units in these three zoning districts. We also have more single units in the other zoning districts as non-conforming uses. But as I said before, that we do not have to allow ADUs in those other zoning districts because we do not allow single family dwellings in those other zoning districts. So, um, and any of those other dwellings are, like I said, are, are considered uh non-conforming or non-conforming uses. So, so out of those sixteen twenty-eight, this first map shows um the, the three zoning districts. The, the, the dark orange is our general residential commercial, and there's about eight hundred and ninety-five single family dwellings in that zone. There are about six hundred and seventy-two dwellings in the uh, in the single fam, in the, sorry, in the low density residential zoning district in yellow. And there are about fifty-four units in the hillside, hillside low density residential, which is in that lighter beigeish color. And so this is the area that we're, that we're talking about, that the ADU, that, that an ADU would be allowed, this is where, this is the location of those zoning districts. We broke them out, or what we did is we broke out and we identified just, just generally um, uh, garage space, that existing garage space that's five hundred square feet or greater, and basement space that is five hundred square feet or greater, that could that could be converted into ADU space right now. And we, let's see. And so we did, sorry, and we did that for the general residential zoning district, which is on this map um currently that you see, as well as the um, the low density residential in hillside low density residential zoning district on this particular map. Um, and this is what we came up with, so there's the, those units that have garage space greater than five hundred square feet is about four hundred and sixty-eight units out of the sixteen twenty-eight. That has basement space greater than five hundred square feet, about seven hundred and nineteen. And then those that would have both garage and basement space is only about three hundred and sixty-six out of those. So wha- what you're looking at, um, units, or, or I should say properties that could that have existing space that could be converted today, you're looking at um, let's see, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, so you've got about eleven hundred. You've got a lot, a little over eleven hundred units, um, so I'm, what I'm doing is I'm adding four hundred and sixty-eight plus seven nineteen. So that's, that's fairly big, that's not, and, and obviously we're not expecting that, that every single person with a garage and every single, every single property owner with a basement is going to be doing this conversion, but that's what is available right now. The other thing that we looked at was um development constraints, geologic hazards, and um the, the constraints that are in our code. Um, and one of the big things um that, that has a big effect on where we can build are what we call the no build areas, or the areas that are over thirty percent in slope. There, we, the, the code basically prohibits development on, on, in these no build areas, or areas that are greater than thirty percent. And this map, right, that miss, this map that's in front of you shows all those areas of greater, those no build areas in red. And so that has a pretty big effect on the, on, on the lots that could otherwise accommodate an ADU. And so what we, we, we did a little bit of number crunching, um, and so what we found out is out of those sixteen twenty-eight lots, only about a hundred and thirty lots have no slope over thirty percent, in other words, there are a hundred and thirty lots, about eight percent that have no um, that are, that, that, that don't, don't have any topography over thirty percent. And so would have no hindrance in building a separate unit for an ADU. What we did is we uh, so we know that some of those lots have very small slivers of thirty percent, so we tried to knock those out. And so we found out that about three hundred and fifty of those lots have less than five hundred square foot of no build area, so we, so um, that's about, that comes out to about twenty-one percent of the total number of lots. Probably have um some sufficient space to build an ADU, so that's quite a bit less. So you have some constraints that is going to keep every single lot or every single um, single family dwelling unit from, from being able to, to develop um an ADU. I think that's, yep. That gives you kind of a big picture of, of what could, um, what could potentially happen in, in the, um, in, in the city right now. So not every lot is developable, not every single family unit, not in every, not every property with a single family dwelling is going to be able to be developed with an ADU. And so we're going to be, it's going to be on a case by case basis, and we're going to be looking at all of these review considerations. Especially with, when you consider setbacks, setbacks and density, uh, density standards, um, that's going to limit the number of lots that could accommodate a separate ADU as well. So um, the, the, the numbers of available lots is actually quite a bit less than the number of single family units that are out there.
Sorry, Fred, um, I think our current proposal indicates that density requirements do not apply to ADUs, um, just because that essentially would then it, it wouldn't permit them in a lot of our smaller lots that already have a residence. So I, I think we did talk about that, we can certainly talk about it with um Planning Commission, but I think that was where we landed on that, was that density wouldn't apply.
Would not apply, okay.
Right.
And, and, and just, just for uh, the Planning Commission's information, the density requirements um in the general, general commercial zoning district, I believe are um fifty, fifty percent?
So general residential, sorry, is um, are you talking about density in terms of dwelling unit or lot coverage?
Thanks for the clarification, I'm talking about lot coverage and uh, the available, yes, the available lot coverage.
Right, okay, yes, and then um, so yes, in the general residential zone district, you can uh have up to fifty percent of your lot coverage with uh impervious structures. I did include a couple uh very rudimentary diagrams showing kind of what that would look like on a standard lot for general residential, and then uh low density residential, which uh allows up to thirty-five percent lot coverage. I did not include a diagram set for hillside low density residential because that minimum lot size is required on um, is dependent on the average slope of the lot, it's um pretty convoluted to figure out what their minimum lot size is um for, it's, we have to determine it on a case by case basis. And um therefore the density, that's kind of why we're recommending that density in terms of the number of dwelling units per acre not be applied to accessory dwelling units, because I'm not good enough at math to figure out how to write that in code. So, um, yeah, I think, I think that was where we were kind of talking about, but yes, uh, in terms of lot coverage, things like your setbacks that are not, so the, the area between the edge of your, your property boundary and um how close you can build to it is called your setback, um, it results in your side yard, your rear yard, things like that. That land is um maintained as open space so that your land, your property and the improvements on it can be maintained without trespassing on your neighbor's property essentially. Um, also to provide light and air to um all adjacent properties, and so um, what we end up with is that um all of the setbacks around the edge of your property will remain undeveloped and therefore um kind of counts towards your um, against your, your lot coverage. So that, that five foot strip of land is required to stay undeveloped and therefore increases the amount of pervious space that you have on your land. and therefore increases the amount of pervious space that you have on your land.
Regarding the density requirements, that is correct. The state law does not allow us to apply our density requirements to ADUs. So that means if, let's see, I think we require minimum forty-eight hundred square feet for forty-four, forty-four hundred square feet for one residential unit. If somebody wanted to put in ADU, we could not require another forty-four hundred square feet on the lot. Rather, the ADU would be, would would simply be allowed on that particular lot. But as we said before, we can apply setbacks and the other development standards to that ADU and to the development of that lot. So one of, one of the takeaways of this of this mapping exercise is that there there's probably limited, a limited number of parcels that could accommodate a separate building for an ADU. Rather, we, what we have observed is there's quite a few more parcels that have existing space, like existing basement space or garage space to accommodate an ADU in the existing buildings. And so therefore, that 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 seems to be more, more available in in this city than available land for for new buildings.
And in terms of, I guess, one of the, one of the metrics that we didn't quite get into was, I guess you touched on it on on one of your maps, but a number of these lots have a garage plus a basement plus buildable land. Yet we're only required to allow one ADU per residential principal structure and per lot. So even if you have all three, and you're showing up in all three of these maps as an available parcel, you still only get one. So there is a fair amount of overlap there. And I I do think it's important to note that in terms of building costs and upfront investment, in terms of like grading permits, geologic hazards evaluations, things like that, those properties that do have existing structures that could be converted or space in the principal structure, those will likely be developed at a higher rate for ADUs than lots that would require new construction.
So let me stop there. And that that's pretty much the end of 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 our presentation. So are the, first of all, are there any questions or anything about what we what we just, of all the stuff that we presented?
I just want to thank the planning staff. Nice job of trying to decipher that out. I really appreciate it.
It was a collective effort. Just about everybody in in the department played a part in in this presentation.
Yeah, it's really exceptional, really.
It's great, great to have the data. And y'all still have your hairs. You didn't pull it all out. So that's, that's good, too. So let me get get this straight. With ADUs, they will have administrative approval, so there won't be any public comment, period. But with short-term rentals, there's, that is not impacted in any way. So there is that same process we have in place for those.
Yes, that's correct. State law does not allow us to approve ADUs through a public hearing process. We have to use an administrative process. But we can keep our short-term rental process the way it is.
On ADUs inside an existing building, I didn't see any requirement that there be a separate entrance. And I don't know that it, there should be, but just wondering about that.
Oh, yeah, we can look into that. That's a good question. My my understanding is actually the building code would require a separate entrance when they apply for a building permit. But but that's, that's a good point. If it doesn't, we can, we can certainly specify that.
Seems like it could be a fire safety concern.
Just wanted to acknowledge that Commissioner Day also has her hand raised.
Okay, Megan, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just want to, third, that this is amazing presentation. Thank you so much. It looks like a lot of work went into this. Really appreciate it. I also had just a question on the the short-term rentals. From the slide, it seemed like there were, they would be prevented from being short-term rentals, which is different from just applying the existing short-term rental regulations. So could you clarify that?
So our current recommendation is is that ADUs not be permitted to be rented on a short-term basis. But I believe Commissioner Latimer was just clarifying that. Even if we don't include that provision, they would still need to go through the the standard short-term rental permitting process, if I understood correctly, and and that is accurate. So we, I think, I think that would be a good discussion point, is whether or not this commission recommends that short-term rentals be prohibited in ADUs.
Okay, I have some thoughts on that. So whenever that's appropriate, I'd like to discuss that.
I'm, I think it's appropriate now, if you'd like to go into it.
Okay, fair enough. So I currently have an ADU from, you know, nineteen twenty-five, it was built. And just as my own experience, I'm sure other folks are in this same position, who also have, you know, two or more dwelling units on their property. So once this passes, I would no longer be eligible to apply for a short-term rental permit for my ADU. Is that correct? If you keep the restriction on short-term rentals for ADUs. Whereas now I can.
I believe so. Yes, if we adopt an ADU, it may be considered non-conforming.
Are you, do you already have a short-term rental permit? I think would be one of the considerations, because we do have several iterations of short-term rentals being permitted through various types of permits. And so those have been grandfathered in under previous sections of code. I, I don't believe that it would be, I I think we would run into kind of a management of resources concern if if we were trying to differentiate between pre-existing ADUs versus new ADUs, especially considering that they're not all going to be constructed separate from the primary structure.
Right. I mean, I think the the goal here, and I think what the main concern is, is people don't want a lot of construction in order to create short-term rentals. But I I think our existing regulation on short-term rentals is very good and very strict and and pretty full. So I don't think we'll see that. And so differentiating whether you or not you can have an ADU as a short-term rental seems like discriminating against ADUs in general and 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 homeowners and and what they are able to do with their property. I think we should just leave the short-term rental. And just like the historic district and any other regulations, what applies to the single-family also applies to the the ADU. And if there is an application, then it is considered with the same criteria and not, whether or not it's an eight, you know, it's a second unit on a property. I don't think that should be relevant.
Okay, noted.
Thanks.
I think the reason that the state went to this level to add the whole ADU thing was to provide long-term housing. So short-term rentals are in direct opposition to long-term housing. So I would strongly encourage us to exclude ADUs from short-term rentals for that reason. That's, as I understand it, one of the reasons we're doing this.
It it seems to me that the only thing that, the only change that we're allowing, just call it new construction, is the lot density coverage basically will no longer be enforced, right? So, so if the, if the setbacks are the same, building standards are the same, everything's the same, the only, we're only letting our guard down on the on the lot density requirement. Is that, is that true?
Sorry, I think we confused those two items. So when we talk about density, I'm talking about dwelling units per acre. So the number of residences on a lot. When we're talking about lot coverage, it's the amount of impervious.
All right, so let's just say lot coverage then, instead of density. That's really the only change when it's all of a sudden done, correct? As far as, if I wanted to, if I wanted to build a second building on my property right now, the, the lot coverage would be enforced. So we're eliminating that with this new change.
No, sorry, our proposal is to, sorry, Fred.
Well, I was going to say, no, that, so, yeah, the change would be the density. We cannot apply the density standards to an ADU. But also, in the there, the the two zoning districts that only allow for one single-family residence per parcel, where the the disordinance would allow for an additional living unit, an additional ADU.
Those are the two big changes, then?
Those would be the two big ones.
Okay, okay.
Right, and lot coverage is going to be enforced for any new development.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I think we're getting the way I understand our previous conversations is that lot coverage would be enforced. So if you have land that is buildable and you have more than fifty percent of your lot available, unencumbered by other structures, then you can build there.
So then the only really change is we're allowing two, two, two residences where there was one. Everything, everything else is still in force. Okay, so if I wanted, if I fit all the criteria there and I wanted to build this second dwelling, why would I not be able, I mean, what, how can, how can you say I can't do a short-term rental? So I think it's going to, I just think we got to put some thought behind that, because it's going to bite us down the road.
I I agree.
So the 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 law allows us to not allow short-term rentals in ADUs, if that's what we want. We we can, we can either allow short-term, we can either allow ADUs as short-term rentals or not. The law gives us that ability to go either way.
In fact, we have ADUs that are short-term rentals right now.
Well, that would depend on the use. Somewhere in here, it it does say an ADU has to be rented in excess of thirty days. I can't find it right.
Yeah, that was in the the guidance, the kind of cheat sheet that we presented, just as kind of a, here's what communicating this information could look like. Because there are so many different spots in our code that need slight tweaks in order to support this policy. And so consolidating it. And and that was something that we heard from the working session with the Housing Advisory Board, was that they were not in support of permitting short-term rentals. I don't believe that we got into the nuance of existing ADUs that could be short-term rented. And so if, if we're asking if those would be grandfathered in, then I think that is a conversation that we need to have. I I think, I think in terms of what we can do, we we can regulate anything that is within the confines of the code. But when it comes to practically, practical enforcement of of the law, I think we could grandfather in the existing ADUs that have short-term rentals or conditional use permits. And we would then apply the standard to any new short-term rental permits that come forward.
I think you'd, you'd have to. Maybe you could put the caveat that the, that the license won't be renewed or on a sale of house or something like that. But to to outlaw existing short-term rentals, that could be tough.
I agree.
I don't think that's what.
I I didn't get, that's what we were trying to do. I I thought we were talking about new ADUs going forward.
Both, both.
Yeah, so I I'm not familiar with the number of current ADUs that that are that are being rented out short-term. But yes, the the intention is not to change gears on what's currently existing. If you have a short-term rental license or 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 a permit to rent out short-term, the intention is not to take that, take that license or permit away.
Under our current short-term ordinances, is that it's based upon the amount of housing we have in the city, correct? We only can have a certain percentage of that be short-term?
Yes.
So would adding an ADU change that ratio?
In theory, it would increase the number from which we calculate. So say we have five thousand single-family homes and we add in a thousand ADUs. Now we have two percent of the six thousand rather than from the five thousand.
But we still have the limiting factor of they can't be within five hundred feet, which we've already, pretty much, there's no open space in the city now, almost, right? It's like, like maybe one?
Yeah, it's limited. The the space that's available is very limited right now.
How about another cause for conversation? One of the rationales for doing ADUs at the state level was to have affordable housing. How do we deal with that at the local level? I can't really see that we can put a cap on how much you can rent a five hundred square foot ADU versus a eight hundred.
I I think the state's idea is that by adding more housing, you force it to be more affordable.
Because otherwise, it's going to, you'd have to work in deed restricted, you know, and we'd have to be attaching a deed restriction to every property for somebody coming in for an ADU. And that, I don't think, as a city, we have the ability to manage.
We would need a housing department. Yeah, the housing authorities in the region have indicated that they are not able to take Manitou Springs on. So it would be something that would need to be managed by, you know, a new entity, either a housing department or housing authority. But I I do believe that the intent behind the law was supply and demand economics to keep, to lower the the rental rate or ownership rate.
Just, and this is just my personal opinion, that 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 people will try, try to rent for whatever the highest market rate is. And I hear you saying supply and demand and so forth. That doesn't help people who are living on a minimum wage or, you know, a short-term income or gig work or anything. So it it doesn't help us help people who need affordable housing. A one-bedroom apartment in my neighborhood is now listed at nineteen twenty-five. And that seems like a lot of money for a one-bedroom apartment.
I agree, but trying to regulate that is just a can of worms.
Chelsea, you said that we have, you you made the comment to tweak the code to squeeze in the law, basically. Is that the long-term goal, or do we have to come up with a separate ordinance for this?
So we will be, and and Fred can talk a little bit more about the ordinance procedure. Uh, so we will be, um, and, and Fred can talk a little bit more about the ordinance procedure. But, um, there, there will be an ordinance that addresses, um, the intent and the, the policy. But then, um, essentially, uh, staff will have a redlined copy of the, the text of the Land Use and Development Code, um, outlining the specific areas where density is mentioned or where, you know, we need this definition to reflect something different. Um, there, there are just a lot of smaller sections of code that, when Fred and I were doing just kind of a read-through, it's like, oh yeah, and this, and this, and this. So it'll be a redlined version.
Okay, so a little bit of both.
Yeah.
Do we have a rough draft of the ordinance or is that what we're working up to?
Yeah, I can get into that. And actually, that's, that's a little bit of another question. Um, Megan has her hand up, so I don't know if, uh, I can talk about the ordinance stuff a little bit later on, but I wanted to make sure we get Megan's question.
I, I'm just trying to remember the short-term rental requirements. Doesn't it require that somebody be onsite? That, that it's, that there be somebody there, which would mean that you have to? Am I remembering that completely incorrectly?
The onsite hosting is not required as short-term rentals. There is an owner occupancy requirement and, um, other types of short-term rentals, such as boarding houses and bed and breakfasts do require onsite. Um, but that's actually one of the items that has been a sticking point, um, for several short-term rental applications is that they have property management companies that are local, but they're not onsite.
Okay, okay. And, and how would that play with like requiring that ADUs cannot be short-term rentals?
I'm not sure what that question is.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. Sorry, sorry about my confusion. I just think that, um, I think that, is there a, a way to require as part of that administrative approval for an ADU that they check a box that say, I do not plan to use this as a short-term rental? Um, and I, I recognize that I am not allowed to for, you know, to get the, um, building permit or the, uh, the administrative approval? Is that a way to do that for new, uh, ADUs for like, I don't know, two, five years or something?
So I think the, um, we can certainly look into that. But I think having folks sign a waiver agreeing not to do something illegal is kind of opening us up um, for, for things that we may not include in the waiver. Um, so by simply not having a short-term rental license, they would not be allowed to do that. And so doing it without the license is unpermitted.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And, and no, no matter all the above, anybody can ask for a variance on this, correct?
Uh, we're talking about a couple of separate things, so, um, we cannot, uh, the way that the code currently is written, we do not support use-based variances. So someone could not get a variance to allow a short-term rental. Someone could ask for a variance for a dimensional standard, such as if they needed their ADU to be four feet from the property line or something like that.
Yep.
If that answers that.
Just a couple of questions. I, I would, I would not be in favor of limiting the, uh, ADUs from short-term rentals. I think that just creates a, a bag of, or a can of worms between grandfathering in and not grandfathering. And then a timing, well, I applied for a permit at this point. My, my building permit didn't, you know, it's just, just a timing issue. And I think just from a, from a use of property standpoint of, of not limiting that. Because I think it seems like our current sh- short-term rental rules should naturally limit the ability for additional, uh, units to come on the market. And so, and, and I don't, I, I don't know what a short-term, you know, I think I've, I've, I've learned a lot tonight just based on what you've said about what's, what's, uh, what's allowed and what's not and, and distances and all, and such. So I, I think maybe there'd be an opportunity to revisit the short-term, uh, short-term rental, um, requirements to see, to, to make sure that you don't encourage the ADUs to, to, to do that. But I don't, I, like I said, I, I would not support limiting that, uh, the, the, the new use just because of the grandfathering in. My other question is, it's always, it's, it comes back to parking. What, what, what is required or what will be required with if, 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 if I put a short-term rental in my garage in my basement? And, and what, what, what's, what's the parking requirement? Yes, yes, I'm sorry, ADU.
Yeah, the, uh, state law limits, um, a municipality's ability to require additional parking for ADUs. And they allow, they, they allow us to require, they allow local communities to require additional parking under certain, only under certain circumstances. And, and let me, I'm pulling those up right now. Actually, I think they're under the previous work session.
Wh- wh- while you look for that, I guess the question comes to mind. If you have a short-term rental, what are the parking requirements for that short-term rental? That may, that may, you know, as, as far as the ADU, that might, uh, help, help with discouraging use of the, of an ADU as a short-term rental if there's a parking requirement associated with that short-term rental.
So, uh, the parking calculations for short-term rentals are based off of the number of bedrooms. And, um, it's something like one space per bedroom for the first two and then one for every, uh, like two beds on top of that or something like that. There's a, there's a whole calculation that goes into short-term rental parking. Um, I believe, and Fred will find it, um, probably as soon as we move on to the next topic. But, um, the, the ADU parking, I believe we can require an existing off-street parking space to be required for the ADU if there's one existing. So for instance, if someone has a two-car driveway, we can require that one of those parking spaces be allocated for the ADU. But if they only have one off-street parking space, we do not have the authority to require that a new parking space be developed for the ADU. Unless, and, uh, as Fred mentioned, there's like a whole slew of information, but it's like unless there's no on-street parking available, there's, um, also no, um, if there's no area for it to be developed, things like that.
Or if, or if the community, or if we prohibit on-street parking, so there's no available, there's no availability for somebody to park on the street, then we can require, um, a dedicated parking space for ADUs. But yeah, that, it's, it's limited. And actually, that, uh, Chelsea pretty much explained the parking situation for ADUs and what we can allow or what we can require. So let me get in, uh, let me get into the ordinances and talk about what's happening right now. So with, with, so with, with an ordinance, we, we will have to adopt a new ordinance that a lot, that allows for this. And what we would do is, um, unless, unless the planning commission wants to have more discussion after tonight or, or, or investigate some other things, um, I, I would recommend that we go ahead and schedule a public hearing for your August meeting where we can bring to, where, where we can bring to a draft ordinance that outlines, um, these proposed changes that you can actually look at and then make a decision on in a public hearing and make a recommendation to city council. And that, and that's, that's how we would adopt, um, uh, these regulations for ADUs is through that ordinance and public hearing.
Fred, um, I know there, there's state imposed deadlines to get all this accomplished. Are we under any kind of pressure?
Yes, and that leads me to my, to, to the next discussion item is, um, there, there was some concern. While we did, uh, uh, staff receipt, receipt, got some concern from some, uh, city councilors about, uh, the deadline, the deadline for coming into compliance with state law was June 30th. So technically we should be allowing them right now. Um, so that's why we're trying to move this, uh, as quickly as possible. But because of the concern, um, that we heard from city councilors, the, our attorneys had recommended that we, that the city council adopt what they call an emergency ordinance. Um, and so that's actually gonna be, that's on the agenda for the city council next Tuesday. And this emergency ordinance is just to, um, take care of the here and now and allow for ADUs right now, um, under.
Okay.
Hello? Yeah, yeah, I'll, um, so I'll, I'll get into that. Let, so anyway, so, um, what, what we're taking is what we call an emergency ordinance, which, uh, will, will get us through right now. This will be a benefit to us for two reasons. Number one, we will be in conformance with state law. But also that will give us, and the planning commission, time to make sure that, that the final ordinance is the way that we want it and we don't have to worry about, about this deadline. Now about that extension, um, there, there was a misunderstanding on staff's part over what that extension meant. Um, and we were talking, again, we were talking with our attorneys. The, the, the extension that we applied for was an extension to uh, the reporting requirements that local communities are required to do to the Department of Local Affairs. By June 30th, we were supposed to have reported to DOLA how we are in conformance with state law. Or we could apply for an extension up to six months, uh, for that, in order to report to DOLA. If we got that extension, that does not negate the fact that the deadline was on June 30th for us to be in conformance with state law. Um, and even though DOLA or the state possibly, probably would not do anything to us, it doesn't keep, um, uh, an individual party from, from legally challenging the city right now because we're not, because we, we have missed the deadline. So that's where the concerns from city council have come from and the, the benefit of having an emergency ordinance adopted.
Be to add the ordinance to a public input meeting on the ordinance. In other words, we'll, can we review it on, in August and then have the public meeting in September?
Um, yeah, so, uh, the short answer, yes, the emergency ordinance does buy us, essentially buy us more time to, and, and allow us to spend more time on this, on what we're doing right now. Um, so we could do that. We could, um, hold another work session next month and, and look at the specific draft language in the ordinance. Um, or if the, or we, or we could go ahead and schedule a public hearing. Um, and we can, we can do either, either one. Uh, yes, right now, what, once that emergency ordinance is adopted, some, uh, somebody could come and, and apply for an ADU. I believe the ordinance after it's adopted is published by the city clerk. How will people know about the emergency ordinance? Um, it, it's, um, it, it's on the agenda, it's on the, it's, it's, it's on the agenda for a city council. And that, that's how it's announced. Uh, yes, so the que- question is if we have, if we, uh, if planning commission reviews the ordinance, uh, wants to review the ordinance in August, can you get it ahead of time, ahead of, in advance of, of the, of the typical um, half, half a week or one week? Uh, yes, I think so. I think we can put something together very quickly now.
Are the other two items that are required, you have a draft and it's at the same thought process together?
Yeah.
At the same time, this is the most contentious.
Yep, yep. Yeah, that's correct. So, um, um, yes, there are two other pieces of legislation that we must comply with. And yes, we, we, those drafts are ready and we can, we can provide those drafts at the same time. I mean, I think we can do that. We just, uh, right now the city doesn't have the capacity to, to monitor that and to assure that that, uh, that's complied with in the long term. Oh, uh, Megan, um, our chair is, is muted. So, uh, Megan, what's your question?
Um, I, I can't hear anybody except for Fred, so just wanted to raise that point.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm trying, I'm doing my best to repeat the questions. Um, but yeah, our, we're, we're having a really hard time with our system, with our PA system. Yeah, so I think unless there's not any other discussion, I think we, what we can do, we'll, we'll put together a draft ordinance and we'll have that as well as the other two for the other two pieces of legislation that we have to comply with. And we'll, um, we will provide those in advance of next month's meeting. Um, and my, what, what I'm hearing is, is you, you want to have another work session to review that before you do public hearing. And so we'll plan that for August and then we'll plan for a public hearing during, uh, your September meeting. Um, because of a rough timeline going out. Okay? Thank you. Oh, um, yeah, I think the, the, the one other update, um, if you haven't heard, Oh, um, yeah, I think the, the, the one other update, um, if you haven't heard, the appeal, the variant, um, um, the, the variance that was decide, uh, uh, the variance that the planning commission had denied at 360 via, via, via Linda Vista, uh, the, the denial was upheld by the city council last, uh, last Tuesday. That's all we have. Okay, uh, Megan, we have adjourned the meeting.